Are you gay, but it's a good day or not?
No, we don't use a coffee pot.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Awesome.
That means you can hear us too?
Yes.
Okay. You're having a struggle. Okay.
I can even see you.
This is the way it's supposed to work. I know you can't see me, I'm looking at you, but you can.
I know.
She can hear us?
Yes. And look, she's so good when she talks.
Are you coming back yet?
Yeah, I wish.
I don't do that.
Don't touch that. Maybe that's why it's not working.
You can still hear us?
Yep. Okay, I'm not gonna touch him. That was delayed.
Walk away.
I don't know. I like this can.
These are all for you guys. To share with all your friends. They wanna join all our beautiful boards. And to remind you of all your meetings. So take that with you.
The table in the window of your time at the passenger.
Do we get someone else on plan?
I might have someone kind of there. I might.
They might, but we haven't turned in their stuff.
I could just fill out.
About told somebody.
Like, are you gonna come to him? It's like, no.
She's gonna have to come.
Well, next year is going up.
Eighteen, yeah. Forced it on because it's.
Yeah. It's going to come. Well, we might have a workshop and I'm gonna meet with our engineer.
Specific.
For G I S. Like, talk in between B S and A and G I S and it's a software that talks.
All right, let's get started. All meeting in your order. All right, roll call please.
Miller.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Leonard.
You're.
Ennis.
Here.
Beavers.
Here.
Dedrick. Craig.
All right, any public comments, anybody not in the field want to say anything?
Hi. Hi, Kim.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well. I'm Caroline Wilson, your county clerk, and I'm out on my biannual updates of the office. Because even years just seem to be a little too chaotic for that to happen. So normally when I come out, I'm handing out the most revised version of the directory. And I'm just letting everyone know that this has now gone electronic. I sent it to all the clerks and everyone I could possibly think of. So if you need one, she could print it off in this format and it will print out like a little booklet. When the independent closed, they were the ones that solicited people and businesses to support. Providing that to us as a county at no cost. So when they closed, I was like, oh gosh, what are we gonna do? Because I find this to be a valuable piece of information. And so we designed it in our office and now. I couldn't get support to help pay for me to have the hard copies. So we went virtual, went online, just like so many other counties are. So if you need it, just so you know, the most recent up-to-date version will always be at the county website. And the reason I say that, it's no sooner did I get this done and mailed, they've sent out to everyone, someone passed away. So I'm going to monitor the changes to where I update it for everybody. But sometimes it's more valuable to me on what changes than maybe the average person out there. So that's where the new directory is, is online for shiawase dot net. The other thing I'm out sharing is that we collaborated with Secretary of State on May thirteenth. They have been taking their services on the road. And we had them at our office in the courthouse on the second floor right outside of our office. So that people that needed to get the real I D. They had all the documents that they might need, birth records, death records, marriage licenses, divorces, or anything like that right there. And it was very successful. They said that they've been doing this initially to get the real I D out there because so many people need it. However, they're looking at doing it more often and they've talked about coming back to our county in September or October. So I thought that was a great, it was a great resource and the constituents that did take advantage of it loved it, so. And then lastly. I'm out talking about the early voting. Did anyone take advantage of the nine-day early voting that we had in twenty twenty four? Is that anybody, I mean, you did?
I did.
At the. The show and the. On State Road?
I. Whatever, I got, I did, oh, I did it by mail.
Okay. So in twenty twenty two, the proposal passed that we had to offer nine-day early voting for every state and federal holiday. Election that is offered, that is usually in the even years. This is a local group clerk responsibility, but most of the clerks were saying to me, I have to run nine days early voting on these bigger years. I'm out. Well, I got a little panicked on that. But I thought they had three options. Clerks could do it individually. Now, keep in mind, they were going to have to purchase separate equipment and everything and have separate workers to work the nine-day early voting. So the cost was just going to be outrageous. And so they could then go or into little pods, three or four township cities go into it together to run the nine-day early voting. Or they could come to an agreement with the county. And that's what we decided to do. We had a long meeting, we went through the agreement and we talked about things. And the reason we decided to do that was one, it just is unrealistic for clerks to be hosting something on their own like that for nine days. So what that looked like, we had February, August and November in twenty twenty four. We're not doing it in odd years because the law says during federal or state elections. So we figured this might change somewhere down the road. It's the first year twenty twenty four was the first year that they were implementing this. So you know, there's going to be a lot we learn from it. And there could be changes potentially coming down the pike. So we thought, we're just gonna stick with the law and see. The reason, another reason was, I'll use New Ulster Schools as an example. Saginaw County is the school coordinator for New Ulster Schools. We have voters in Shiloh County that are saying, are New Ulster Schools. So Saginaw is doing nine-day early voting for every single election. No matter how big, no matter how small. We are not. If we also decided to put something on the ballot. And one of my voters decides that their rights have been violated in some format. They could petition and, you know, take things further. And that is the scenario, one of the scenarios that the state is looking at that could change it to go from the federal state holiday elections only to every election. So right now, we're just going to ride things out. We haven't had any complaints. I have had a May election, I have an August election and I will be having a November election. But we're not prohibiting anyone from being able to vote. They just don't get to come in person if they wanted to. They still have the A V process and they still have election day process. So the nine-day early voting. Everyone liked it. So to give you an idea of what that looked like, February presidential primary, three hundred and twenty-three voters for the entire nine days. Okay. We're like, this is gonna be slow. Keep in mind, they have to be there eight hours to offer that opportunity. And when you work in an election, you know that it's not an eight-hour day, more than likely ten or more, depending on what the election is. So August comes along, we have three hundred and twenty-six voters for the entire nine days. We're like, okay. This isn't really catching on. Well, November was a whole different story. I called my people and I said, I think we're gonna be a little busier. We're getting a lot of calls. Oh, that was an understatement. We had five thousand five hundred and sixty-six voters for the November election.
Over nine days.
Over nine days. And on the ninth day, we had nine hundred and sixty-nine. And I so badly wanted to go find that remaining number to just sit there and get a thousand voters. But that is a ton of people. So if you haven't taken advantage of that, it will happen again in twenty twenty-six, the August and November election, unless the state does something in May. And that location is at the Veterans Building on State Road in Corona. And it's in the back of the building. So we also went in together because of the cost. I was able to get all the equipment through a grant. And I have five tabulators. And so this is twenty jurisdictions going in on this, on the city of Los of Dejaron. So I have five tabulators. Four, I have a backup. My friend said, order more than what you need because if we have a breakdown in nine days, we have to pay for someone to come in and who knows how long that will be. So we have backup equipment. It's four tabulators. One tabulator has six jurisdictions, seven jurisdictions, seven jurisdictions, and then my five cities. And so we just have a means to be able to do it that we can tell which tabulator they have to go to. The other cost-saving measure that we were doing was the ballot on demand. So this is a new concept that you come in, we swipe your I D, we can tell what ballot style you need. We look up the code and we type it in and your ballot populates and we print it off right there. So when we say hot off the press, it's literally hot off the press. So we don't have any overage. I mean, I had seventy-six different ballot styles. How would I keep track of that for nine days with all those people? But those are reasons why we went into it, but mostly for the cost. So the grant money was almost seventy-seven thousand for the tabulators alone. So that saved everybody a lot of money. And the state was going to reimburse us wages for the election workers. So to implement this, there's a lot of things that have to take place. I was able to get grant money to cover all of that. And so when the, it boiled down to the wages for the workers in February, local clerks were billed back a hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. In August, they were billed back a hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-four cents. And in November, they were billed back two hundred and thirty-one eighty-three. Now, that's pretty good for the costs that you guys would have been putting out if it was them doing it individually. I don't know what it's going to look like going forward as far as what kind of money we will get back from the state. We are working really closely and diligently with the state, they're saying, we're going to need coverage, we're gonna need some kind of money, and hopefully that will be in the wages. However, when you're splitting something up amongst twenty, it sure does make the costs go down significantly. So everyone that came through loved it. We didn't hear one thing. Everyone loved it. So we know it's here to stay. Now, we'll see what twenty twenty-six brings, but. Well, it's kind of my report. It's, it was a very busy year. You keep in mind, that's two weekends and five days, nine days before an election, three times last year. So we did it without a hitch. Really, we had no problems. And lastly, we did a contest with the schools for their art program and seeing if any of their art students wanted to do the mural on the back wall of the building. And we had a winner for Morris area schools. She's in the process of finishing that right now, so it should be done by the end of the month. And it's gonna look great. And so now people won't have a problem when they come behind the building to see where it's at. It's pretty cool. So. Thanks for the time. Welcome to all the new members that I have never met before. And feel free to call my office anytime you need a question answered.
Thank you. Thank. Got it? All right, moving on to bills. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. First and second for consenting. The bills, the minutes and treasury reports, all in favor? Actually, sorry, any discussion? No, all in favor? Any opposed? Moving on. Number two. Motion to approve the resolution twenty-five oh eight budget amendment. Budget lady, what's the amendment?
It's just amending our year and budget, anything that needs to be lowered, anything that needs to increase. We had. I did it a different format, see if it's easier for you guys to read. And the projected, that's the major part to kind of look at, the projected column. All but three things had decreased as a total in each department. Because I just moved numbers and money around. We actually increased like sixty thousand dollars in our revenue, which we still bring in a fund balance of positive with any of the budget amendments that we have. Wasn't anything. Significant, I'm here. Biggest thing is cemetery, which we are been working on the last couple of months with increasing things, so.
It's twenty-five oh eight.
That's just the resolution number. It's just a res, every large resolution gets a number. So then another one that you'll see, it'll be twenty-five oh nine, not twenty-five. It's just the one that.
It's just a number that.
This is the number.
So.
Every, every resolution has its own number.
Seven previous.
No. It's the year twenty-five and it's the eighth one this year.
Oh, okay. Okay.
There you go. Like, no, that's just a number.
I'll make a motion to approve the second. I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor for approving the amendments? All right. All right, that is moving forward. All right. The resolution, end of the year budget, all right, motion to approve twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Do not change anything since last time.
All right. Need a motion? I'll make a motion. Need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, let's do a roll call since it is the budget. Kimberly.
Miller.
Roll call. Cause you love him so much.
Miller.
Miller.
Yes. Frank.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yeah.
Ennis.
Yes.
Beavers.
Yes. All right, that is approved. Next item, motion to approve the B D A budget, the site. That's.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You got a motion on the floor? I'll second. Any discussion? We really don't have a lot of input on this, do we? So. All right, all in favor? Right, I. Any opposed? Carry forward. Funding for the C D B G grant.
We got the, we got it. You can apply for the L O. Oh, for the grant.
I know.
We can apply for the grant.
This is the housing zone?
Yes. So the L O Y was accepted. So we can apply for the C D B G. B B D B. B B D B.
That's to clean up properly.
That is to do the infrastructure.
Okay.
Um, I was saying in the finance meeting, I have a meeting with Tricera Thursday. The testing all came back really well and should not have to have any, you know. So. I'm not an expert at reading all that, so. See how the meeting goes, but. From what I understand, we don't have to do any cleaning, everything is right under level. So we'll, we'll see. I'll know more.
What's time is out.
Thursday.
Thursday.
I don't remember, I have a handful coming up.
So assuming the purchase agreement went through.
So I just got the purchase agreement yesterday.
Oh.
That. With the, what really Jay Mark, Lori wanted to add in there and he added that in there, so now we can sign it. And send, and send it in or keep it, so it'll be there, but obviously we can still back out of it if we want, but. We did get approval to apply for the C D B G grant, so I don't know. And see how, that's not due until September. My seventh, so we have a while.
And that's what we're voting on right now. To, to apply, is that what we're?
Right, Kim?
Yes, it's, we're just letting you know that we are now gonna apply for it. That's, that's the letter that they sent that I, that I put in the packet. It's just stating that now we're going to apply for the grant and all of that to do in September.
Anything from us then?
Uh, you do need to approve that, just so we can move forward with giving them everything for the grant.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the applying for the grant.
I'll make a motion to apply for the grant, the C D B G.
I'll second. Any discussion on?
Should just to get it?
Just to start it. Just to start.
But we're advised to be approved or just approved? To be able to apply for it?
Yeah, we have to do a letter of interest. And then they had to approve our letter of interest. And then once they approve our letter of interest, then they have, then we have to actually apply for it.
We follow all the rules and all the things that they have set for this grant, we will, we will get grants.
For good reasons, I'm sure. So everybody gets the. All right, so we got a motion on the floor in a second to approve applying for the grant. Any further discussion? To all in favor? Any opposed? Let's carry forward, so apply for that grant. All right, playing for just the year twenty twenty-six, resolution category B.
That would be the grant for.
Not a resolution twenty-five oh seven.
That was made before the twenty-five oh eight.
Okay, so what are we going with?
We have to approve. C two A E applying for that, cause they are the ones that apply for that thing.
Is there a match on that?
So we're applying, it's half.
Yeah, so I think, but I thought of that, but.
So I can. Are you, so it's gonna be the Grant Street? That reconstructory that we were talking about. And then Church Street between there's Third North Street and West Grand River Road, which will be a knowledge in a place. And then West First North Street between West Street and Crum Street and various locations of cracks. So. You're more likely to get a category B grant when it's all maintenance and it's also not like full blown, like reconstruction. So we didn't get it last year, got the year before. We're hoping putting more maintenance and smaller stuff in there with only one reconstruct, we're hoping that will.
That means chip and seal. Yes, chip, seal.
Yeah, cracks.
Because you got some work.
Kind of like, we're either gonna spend half a million dollars to do this ourselves, or we can try to get two hundred and fifty from them, but two hundred and fifty.
So that's what we're thinking it's gonna be, it's half a million dollar project.
Yeah, it's, so I print up emails, I had, so it's estimated to be five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And then, yeah, we do a fifty percent match, so. Like any preliminary, like anything engineered that doesn't get covered in the grant, it's all the maintenance and construction. So any of that stuff we would have to cover, but still would be stuff on top of the half million that we would do if we didn't get the grant. So.
I'm usually about to put them in C I P.
Yeah, and it's, I asked the pricing to five this year and they believe it, it might be a little less than what it was last year. And last year, we were between five and six thousand dollars to apply and submit everything, so. It's hopefully, maybe it's between forty-five and fifty-five. And to apply and do everything, but still, we get it, we're saving half a million dollars, so.
I will make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five oh seven.
Second, I'm reading. I will second. Any further discussion? All in favor for applying for the. The resolution. All right. All right. All right, Shiloh County Local Hazard. Mitigation Plan. Who's got this one?
It'll be Dan.
That'd be Dan.
Really long too, do you see how many pages?
I do.
Are you gonna read it?
What page is this one? Oh, put us a statement, please.
Sorry, I want to get.
The hat, the.
So the Hazard of Mitigation Plan was a hundred and seventy-six pages, something like that.
Storytime.
Yeah. So basically, nothing's just changed that just Homeland Security has to do this every five years, so look, it's just an update.
Did we ever find out if they needed to approve this or if it was just for their? Okay.
And then we send it back to them.
All right, so need a motion to approve. Never a closing mitigation plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the Shiloh County Local Hazard Mitigation Plans.
I'll second it. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, I believe. Any opposed? Let us carry forward. Next item, just motion to approve the police contract.
So several months ago, we, myself and then now I'm that with the union and came to an agreement reference to their hourly wage. And then they also incorporated the sick time language, which in a state mandated, so. That was basically it. It was only basically one item and that was wages and we kind of incurred on that, so.
Anything that was changed, I believe, is in red or crossed out.
Yeah, and bold and.
You know, it is every three years or?
Three-year contract, which starts July first. Goes until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-eight.
In a motion to approve. I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any further? Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving contracts?
Bye.
Any opposed? Good. Motion to approve the yearly council meeting schedule.
Go through the schedule for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six year.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, I?
I.
Any opposed? Let's carry forward. Sewer rate, sorry, sewer rate study.
Okay, so this is just informative. I talked to Adam from C two A E. I checked around with others. Can't really compare, but others having water and sewer specified like a price range. Or the R U's like so, and different systems, like we have lagoons, everyone has lagoons. Um so I ended up talking to Adam at C two, C two A E. Um with all of our C I Ps coming due and um looking at the sewer lines and the storm drains and the streets and everything. One thing that we thought of doing is working together. Because if you do it separate, uh several years ago, it's. State that you, the state states that you have to use a financial advisor and an engineer, and engineer can't just do it themselves anymore. So we're paying out of pocket to two different entities. Or on this lovely Michigan Rule Water Association. Um program, and it's an actual. Huge spreadsheet. Where I would input the data that I, we collect. And what C two A E collects as engineers, and we can do it ourselves with the help of the engineer. Um so that is an option. Um if we don't want to do it that way, I can always, we can create an R F P and send it out and get bits in and do it that way, so. Was very kind of what I found, wasn't very super beneficial, but. Gives us kind of.
And this is to see usage?
To see where we really truly should be with our sewer rates, what we charge. So the the spreadsheet is very, or it's actually it's a whole workbook. But it takes all the depreciation, it takes usage, it takes. Um equipment, it takes, I don't like so much data. Um what are projects we have coming up? What what we were planning for, it compiles all that stuff and then it gives you an estimate. And the last page you can actually put in, what if I, what if we charge this, like where would we get? And that like dippies everything up, or what if we charged this amount, or if we took this project out, where would we, where would we fall? So it helps so that we don't, you know, like get in the situation like the Oaxaca is.
Did we have um? A few years ago, a company come in and checked all the sewer lines and all that.
Yeah, when it's.
We cambered it through a grant.
That's not.
Saw a grant in eighteen. Yeah, it was in eighteen.
So that would fall into what you're looking at.
Yeah, so that we would need more up, we need to get updated numbers, which. So it wouldn't be as, like, we wouldn't be starting from fresh. It would be. You know, doing it more than we have to see where.
It can trap the deterioration.
Yeah. So I can use stuff that we've used prior, because this actually, I found was done in two thousand and seven. That's where I found this, so I would get, I will, if you want to go that route, I'd get a hold of Michigan Rule, see if they have. If this is still the same workbook and. Or get it updated if it, if it's updated, so.
I, I think that makes perfect sense. At least then we have something concrete that we're looking at and. I haven't heard anything from anyone who believes that our current sewer rates are sufficient to keep up with. The main principles we're doing, so.
I can catch up.
Yeah.
All right, anything else on that, anybody? Committee reports, does anybody want me to go through their committee reports? L S W? No, too? He won't, he's not. Finance committee?
We went over the budget, everything we approved today. Police committee was canceled, anything for you?
Making money.
Dan was busy.
Oh, police, yeah, I gave RJ the knockout.
You know, Dan had fifteen reports. One thousand one hundred and nine patrol miles, he made fifty-six stops. Twenty-eight tickets were issued and twenty-eight warnings. And eleven ordinance violations.
Ooh, that's a lot.
It's the same thing.
People don't like to mow their grass.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, planning commission.
Though we just talked about maintenance.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah. Oh, yeah, but we might be trying to redo that and try to get that thing re-done. Re-establish, so.
The rental side of it. Um both sides of the other side, yeah.
Yeah, there's some things that were left out, but. We'll have to kind of look at it to go from back to. D D A. Um they're.
They're all working on that, so. Fundraisers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Summer fest, which is going on, um they, they ordered the sign, they're gonna put it someplace and build a parking lot on those. They're all trying, still trying to figure out the cup thing, so. So if you guys are asked, they have to buy a cup from each establishment. Has to be empty before they can enter another establishment. They can put all three cups and just walk around and switch them out and go get them that way, so. They have to say inside the district. But they can't go down that way. If people. All right, other items?
I was just curious how the, the spring fest went. I wasn't able to attend any other.
Any major issues?
With the beer tent and all the new stuff they did.
Beer tent did look that busy.
I don't think so.
Um so I don't even know if they broke even. I've been here, um that was no issue, um. We didn't have really any other issues other than we ran a lot of traffic. It's uh, even though there's like six twenty-five mile an hour signs up on Doyle's.
Yeah.
I would have to suggest one thing, was when they do the. To close down the Flint Park right here with Wood Hall, when they do the vendors, because it was crazy. Uh Friday morning. There was people trying to walk across, but are giving toward everyone. Down.
Right.
What else? They were like, people were walking from the park onto the road, and then they had people trying to drive down the road, even though we had barricades out, and it was just. And then parking lot was full and. And there's more of them, I just, we were, Kim and I were like, oh my gosh, who's gonna get hit? Like someone's gonna get hit, so we were just walking around like it was closed.
Right during the prey time.
So we just.
No, that was Friday morning.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we just need to block it off while they're setting up.
Yeah, me, yeah, I mean.
Well, it's not that hard, I mean, we just need to reword it next year, that just needs to have the utilities around the world.
Yeah, I think that'd be easiest.
And Dan will sit there, right there and catch up.
Anything else?
The library, we do have another resignation, Beth Crawford. And then her resignation, so I would. We thought that would be submitted, she guys already, so I'll make sure that's done. We have two openings.
You did have somebody apply though, correct?
There's someone.
No, we got a paperwork, yeah, they're asked about that today.
Maybe it'll say at once, so don't.
Yeah.
Change it, yeah.
Oh, things are. A little bit forward.
I will, no, good. All right, if there's nothing else. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, we are adjourned.
Maybe Kim's our issue, she's here waiting.
It's all.
Take it so long in the meeting.
Record, I think.
Your schooling, the up.